17th work session of the Gaston County Board of Education. I am Kevin Collier, Chairman of the Board, and to my left is Mr. Jeff Ramsey, Vice Chair and at-large Member of the Board. I'm going to start down on the very end and allow the School Board members to introduce themselves.
And please, another piece of housekeeping, you have to push the little button, the green thing, before you speak and then turn it off when you get through it.
Doc Cherry, at-large Member.
Brad Moore, Crowder's Mountain.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Terry Usrie, Sherwood.
Chris Howes, South Point Township.
And Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting and thank you for being here. We have some special guests with us this evening, and it's the Board of the County Commissioners of which have joined us in a joint discussion of the purchase of property in Belmont for a new middle school. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Brown, the Chairman of the County Commissioners, to introduce his members.
Thank you, Mr. Collier, and just want to start, we'll start with, I am Chad Brown, the Riverbend Township, and I'll start with Commissioner Grant, and we'll start there from there.
I'm Don Grant, Commissioner Gastonia Township.
Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
I'm Ronnie Worley from the South Point Township.
Thank you, Mr. Collier.
Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. You have the proposed agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? A motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Dedman. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, those who are for the adoption of the agenda as presented, please show by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. All right, the next item is a discussion, and I'm just going to make a statement and then we will turn it over for presentation to our real estate attorney. As you are aware, in January of this year, the Board of Education voted unanimously to approve a contract to purchase approximately 78.5 acres in Belmont. The contract provided for a free look, due diligence period through February 22nd, 2017, and was subject to requested legal approval of the Board of County Commissioners. The time period needed to be extended because the Commission will not meet again until March 28th, 2017. So, on February 20th, 2017, of this year, the Board of Education voted to approve the purchase of approximately 78.5 acres in Belmont for the purchase price of $65,000 an acre or total price of $5,105,100, subject to statutorily required approval of the purchase price by the Board of County Commissioners, and approved the First Amendment to the contract extending the closing date until March 31st, 2017, and approved a $40,000 extension fee that is non-refundable but applicable to the purchase price, and authorized the Superintendent to approve the signing of the First Amendment and all closing documents. This purchase is pending approval of the purchase price by the Board of County Commissioners at their meeting scheduled March 28th, 2017. I'd like to say I never thought in a million years that choosing where to build a middle school would be this difficult. I'm surprised and I'm sorry that it's not going well. Before I became Chair of the Board, I was Chair of the Operations Committee, and I was the point of contact for capital projects. Developers, real estate brokers came to me with proposed sites to consider over months, and we had a running dialogue with the community for quite some time. In the end, this site that is the proposed piece of property is a good site. Even after all this, I still think it's the right thing to do. We want to get along with the County Commissioners. It's good for our community, and I'm hoping we can set aside our differences and do what's best for our school system. Tonight, we have Attorney Kevin Brinjwott to present some relevant information to this issue. We can open the floor for discussion, and I will try to facilitate the discussion as we move forward. Mr. Brinjwott is an attorney for Brinjwott &amp; Snover, the law firm in Davidson. Mr. Brinjwott provides legal services to Gaston County Schools related to procurement of contracts, construction, and other facilities-related matters. I'd like to go ahead and say that following our discussion with the Commissioners, I will call for a short break, and then the Board of Education will reconvene to finish its work session agenda. Mr. Brinjwott, I'm going to give you the floor, sir.
Very good, thank you very much. School Board members, good to see you all again, members of the County Commissioners, nice to meet you folks. Just a few little housekeeping matters to get started. I have passed out, or asked the clerk to pass out, you have a memo under my letterhead summarizing the relevant information that you're certainly welcome to take with you and read. I'm intending to share all this information with you in the presentation here in a few minutes. We also have just a brief PowerPoint presentation with a few of the areas and information about the site, so we can refer to that as necessary as well. Guess what my hope is in the next 10 or 15 minutes or so is to do my part to try to facilitate a good conversation between the two boards. We're obviously here because in North Carolina, the way school-real estate deals get done is you need the cooperation of both the School Board and the County Commissioners. That's a function of the state statutes in Raleigh. School Board's task, and as the state has kind of divided things up, is to select the site, enter into the contract for the site, ultimately hire an architect, develop and construct on the site. County Commissioners obviously have the purse strings, that really ends up being kind of two tasks, is one, to set the budget, and I understand you all have done that, and you set the budget and authorized funding, I understand you all have done that back in November with this $40 million authorization to go forward with the, I guess, remaining bonds, as I understand it, from 2007, with an expiration date. I'm not a bond attorney, but I know enough to be dangerous, I think that 10 years is the extent of the ability to issue funds. So you're on somewhat of a tight timeline in connection with this overall real estate deal, with the funding aspect of it being opened through about the November of this year. The second part that the County Commissioners have to do is why we're here today, is by statute, the county has to approve the purchase price for any real estate deal. So again, that's a creature of statute, and it's obviously the county's role to take a look at the purchase price, make a determination whether you believe it's reasonable. I've got a client, and I certainly think it is reasonable, and the request is that you all will approve it, but I understand there's some issues and questions, and we're here today to talk about that, and again, hopefully facilitate a very good line of communication, and at least get all the information out on the table so everybody has it in front of them. So with that as kind of a starting point, I really just want to do two things here in the next few minutes. I want to just share a little bit of background information about the assignment and the site itself, so we all are sure that we're working off the same information there. Again, this will be a little bit of repeat for my School Board folks, but bear with me, I think it's important that we're all working off the same information. And then we'll review the contract, and really end just by going over what the practical choices are. I'm kind of the checklist plus-minus guy, and I just would like to lay out at the end of my presentation what the practical choices are with the hope of clear-eyed plus-minus list, and then open the floor for discussions, and, you know, hopeful that all of you can get on the same page at some point here in the very near future. So with that as an introduction, let me jump into this thing and talk about the property a little bit and our assignment, okay? So I think everybody agrees that the starting point of this was New Belmont Middle School, replacement school, everybody's on the same page, that's the assignment, which means that the search area for the site is as close as possible to existing Belmont Middle School in the Belmont jurisdiction. You all probably know from past experience that the, you know, target sites and site criteria for a middle school is about 30 to 35 acres. Ideally, I say 30 to 35 usable acres, you'd like it to be, you know, reasonably flat. Access to utilities is of course an item that matters for every land acquisition. Good road frontage in a location where you could have kind of a normal school circulation pattern with driveways is a key piece of the site process. So those are the kind of issues that you're looking for in trying to identify a site that would work for a replacement middle school. We think we have a site that meets those criteria and exceeds it, and I will just direct your attention to the PowerPoint if we can get this to work, let's see. We don't have any luck to flip it. All right, Cindy, I'm trying. So there we go, where do I need to point to? All right, you want me just to say click? All right, so, you know, I think everybody's, you're all more familiar than I am with the location of Belmont and possible sites and the location. Let's move to the particular site. Can I click again, Cindy? Sorry, I'm struggling with that. So here's the site, I've been calling it the South Point Road Site now, it's near South Point High School. Site's about 78 acres or so on South Point Road. It is obviously on a good-sized road there. The property is under contract right now to MB Realty Group, the developer of the property, and then we have a contract with that developer to purchase the property from that development company. We put the property under contract and then commenced with the due diligence work that would be typical of really any commercial real estate deal, but certainly appropriate for a school site. Staff engaged the engineering firm to do the kind of routine soil report, environmental kind of work you would typically do before you make a decision to buy the site. My firm did the legal role of the title search, hired a surveyor to do the survey work, and again, all these things would be typical in any commercial real estate deal. We also met with representatives of the town of Belmont, NC DOT, pleased to hear that we had, you know, very favorable meetings with those folks. We've got a permitting process, assuming this deal were to go through, that would occur with Belmont in the future, once we had an architect onboard, but we were pleased to get the support from their staff, and the NC DOT folks seemed to think it was a reasonable site. Certainly will be discussions in the design stage about where you put the access and what side of the, you know, site you access it from, but I would characterize those conversations as very favorable with the Belmont staff. So based on doing all of that work, if we could click one more, Cindy, would probably be good. We, summary of the due diligence, I won't belabor all the details of that today, go one more, is staff, and we all feel like we're ready to go. And so, we ran the due diligence, convinced it's a good site, and then the last step in the process is of course the County Commissioner approval of the purchase price and the funding. So let's just recap quickly the contract, and again, I'll go over kind of the list of practical choices for everybody. Again...
Cindy.
So I think everybody's aware of this, but where we are is the property is under contract to MB Realty Group. We have a contract with MB Realty to buy from them, trying to time it up as a simultaneous closing where we would buy the property. So really, it ends up with three practical choices, and these are the three choices the School Board had, and in the end, it's really the three choices that I would say the County Commissioners have. You can go forward with the deal that's on the table with the contract, approve the purchase price, move forward and acquire the site. Choice two is walk away from the deal. Choice three would be to condemn a portion or all of the property. Those are really the only three choices. On the School Board side, I think that was a pretty easy choice, certainly had no interest in trying to condemn half the property from, you know, charitable organization or just generally opposed to that, and I know even if there was not a political and business opposition to that, from a legal side, I'm always reluctant to recommend that to my local government clients, especially if you're talking about a portion of the property. So my assumption is condemnation is not a practical choice on that list. Then you have the choice of walking away from the property, and that has the obvious disadvantage of you lose the site and you threaten your ability to even get a site in the timeline that we're talking about, needing to get this done by, with the need to get funding in place, you know, by November. Leading to the choice that the School Board obviously has chosen, which is to go forward with the deal as is, I think everybody was very clear-eyed about the plus-minuses of the deal. It's not a perfect deal, but it's a very reasonable deal. The positives of the deal, we certainly control our destiny on that, both of you do, right? You get a site that meets the criteria, we're on schedule, we have a property that should work very well for a middle school, we have a site that we believe has the support of Belmont. So all those are very big positives and the reason we would want to go forward. The negatives of that, I think, are clearly the size of the property is more than you absolutely need for a 35-acre middle school site, so that does make for the, you know, added consideration of the county that you have a larger budget number at 70 acres, you know, 70-plus acres, at $65,000 an acre obviously is a bigger ask than to do it for half the site, and so you just have a larger number associated with that. Now, my recommendation that I've made to my own board and would just throw out for discussion here is how do you mitigate that downside risk? And I really think it's one of two things. It's either you are comfortable holding the site longer term for land banking it, you know, possibly for future school or government purposes, I don't know whether an elementary school or that type of thing, you know, long, long-term would be something that would be worth discussing, or you move to a sale of the back half of the property for a residential use, and presumably there would be a discussion about putting any money from sale of surplus property back into the school capital account in some form or fashion, either to pay down the debt or to help fund a new school project going forward as required by state statute there. So that's pretty much it, folks, I mean, that's a, just trying to tell you what the plus-minuses are, give a little background to, you know, how we got to where we are today, hoping to facilitate, like I said, a very good conversation. I hope I've been fair in speaking for my client and their thought processes as we've gone through this in several different meetings. That's where we are. I know we'd sure like to have everybody together and wish we had unanimous votes at both places to go forward with this, but I believe everybody's open to talking and trying to answer everybody's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brinjwott. Mr. Howe is Chair of the Operations Committee, and he's already at work in trying to select an architectural firm with his committee. I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Howe, there's a couple slides I think that he's going to share with us right now about the property.
I'll speak from the podium just for the microphone's sake. Some of you may or may not be able to see me, just up down there. Okay. Part of the Operations Committee's responsibility last Friday was to interview four architectural firms that had replied to a request from the Board of Education to submit some site plans. Although we're not ready to announce an architectural firm, one of the ones that's currently working with us now, LS3P, and Dave Bellamy, who is in the audience, was one of the firms that was there for consideration of selection and did some site drawings just to kind of give us a showing what it would be, and he's volunteered to come in and show, allow us to show some of his slides and how he's situated, or the school could be positioned on it, how it affects the flow of traffic and that sort of thing. So that's all I'm here to tell you tonight is what we saw on that Friday. You've already seen the property, South Point Road, being, if you're looking at the screen to your right, the back end of the property to the left. The school would actually be situated, is that next slide? School would actually be situated towards the front is the most ideal location with the least amount of prep work as far as elevation's concerned, so at least amount of dirt outtake and intake, if you will, so the removal in the field. And in doing that, it frees up the back half, you can kind of see where that natural line is past the ball fields, that if we wanted to do something different or what have you, that would be available. And then, one of the other things that we considered as we were looking at architectural firms, this is just another site setting, you can see how they put the school, but bringing in some traffic off of South Point Road by Dr. Blow's office, which is the dental office located between the property and the high school, which is to the north of that graphic there, and then also bringing some in to the south of that graphic you see there as far as parent traffic, student drop-off, that sort of thing. One of the things that our committee talked about as we interviewed architectural firms was the need to really work with DOT and transportation in the city of Belmont, because if you drive down South Point Road right now, within about 110 yards, you'll hit two stoplights, one coming out of the new Harris Teeter project at the student drop-off area for the high school, and the second one being at the crossroad that what I term as a cut over, living in Belmont. And so we talked about the need to have to do some functionality there to make it more, to flow better, kind of like what they've done on South New Hope with the roundabout, if you bend down that way, the new roundabout, or even over at Stewart Kramer, who, in talking to Mr. Worley this morning, the rumor was always that was going to be a traffic nightmare, and I think the quote he gave me was 10 wrecks a day, and that roundabout's proven not to be that, but even be better than what was expected. So my job is to kind of show you where that would be, more so that slide of where it would sit, and show some free up of the backside, and then explain that the cost effectiveness of putting it there is pretty good for the school system and the county.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for discussion, comments, questions.
I'll lead off offensive.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Just wanted to read a brief statement from the Commission, and then after that, if there's any questions that need to be facilitated after that, we'll be able to take those. On behalf of the Gaston County Commission, I want to thank the School Board for the opportunity to meet and discuss the many issues facing our community. We are not here tonight to rehash the past, nor are we here to argue. It is clear after polling the Commission that the majority of the Commissioners will not support the current land acquisition. Therefore, I'll be pulling this from the March meeting as of right now. I do believe we can work together going forward to find an appropriate site at less cost. I recommend we both, over the next few weeks, try to find a site we can agree on and move forward. With that understanding, we propose that the land purchased by the Gaston County Board of Education in Belmont will fail if the desire is the Board to see a continued effort of the building of the new middle school in which we all want to see, including the Commission, before the 2007 bond monies expire. I'm making the following recommendations on behalf of the Gaston County Commission to appoint a Board of three, from the County Commission being Commissioner Worley from the South Point Township, which also houses the Belmont location, also Commissioner Philbeck from the Dallas Township has also agreed to serve. The last one would be Commissioner Hovis, who has extensive knowledge of working representation. Along with the School Board, we'd like to have a suitable group of three, if that so be, and then at the end of that, we'd like to direct that committee to try to get back to us with some comments, so that we could either have it on our Board meeting on the 28th or therefore after. We're also directing the county staff, including Mr. Hickson, EDC, Mr. Mathers, and also Mr. Morehead, to work with the school staff to make sure that the school bonds are sold before the deadline of the 2017 November deadline, as long as we all agree on a parcel for the new middle school. After that, I'll leave it over to any of the Commission who wants to make comment further on what the statement was.
Okay, Mr. Brown, I'd like to just reply. I would implore you to please not pull it from your agenda at this point in time and tell this committee has had a chance to possibly do that. I would hope we could leave the door open for March 28th and not be so hasty as to pull it today. I think we have some time for this recommendation to get together and do this. We've heard the Commissioners' recommendation of a committee, I'd like to hear comments, opinions, questions from my Board. Mr. Howe?
Mr. Collier, Mr. Brown, I think the recommendation to have a collaborative Board or a collaborative ad hoc committee work together on this, I think is a good thing to do. I think to have some oversight from the County Commission and the cost of the value of the property, the location of it, but also have some input from the School Board of the necessity of what we need, that's the kind of collaboration we're talking about as the Operations Chair. I'd like to submit my name to be a part of that. I would like to reiterate what Mr. Collier said, or Mr. Brown, that I don't know necessarily, I would pull the item from the agenda, of course, that's your choice as the Chairman, but maybe leave that as an open item to what that wording might be, because my hope would be that in a three-week period, which is the timeframe that we have between now and then, that that ad hoc committee between the two boards collaborating together could either vet the current property that's there and say it's a doable deal and it's good for the citizens, or they have the other, whatever parcel that might be, or parcels brought to them that allows us to bring it to the County Commissioners, bring it back to this Board to say, hey, this is good for what we need, it's good for Belmont, it's good for the citizens of this county, and then keep that on there. So I'll throw that out there, and Mr. Collier, that's it.
Mr. Brown?
I think that was in response to the pulling of the Board, just to make sure we can green-sheet it, or we can have it once we have something that comes back to our committee through that, so that's why we're trying to say, we don't want everybody to get hasty in that regard, so that's why we wanted to make sure that we were doing our right thing of having it, but we also want to make sure that if we need to move something new, we had the way to get it in there. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, I just want to clarify, you have full support from your Commissioners on that recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have a majority.
All right. School Board members, any more comments, questions? Mr. Ramsey?
Yeah, I don't mind at all the collaboration that Chris talked about and Mr. Brown, but I am concerned about the timeframe. I think you don't realize the due diligence that we've done on this property, about three or four months of it, sitting down with City Council of Belmont, planning, doing soil surveys, all of it and above it. Every checkpoint that we have on this property works. As Chris's presentation was, what he left out, there's a 21-acre pad sitting there for a school to sit without moving any dirt, and the architect guy will be able to tell you that, but that's what I got out of it, because other schools would have to move a lot of dirt, and you're talking millions of dollars when you do that. I know you are concerned about the price upfront, but you're going to save money on the back end, two reasons. Belmont Middle School will be a very attractive, old-school developers' gift. Also, you have the opportunity to sell the property in there on Lakewood Road to recoup your money. So when this group gets together, you've got three weeks to put something together. Earl, when we sat down with them two weeks ago, he said the timeline is tight, and I mean in the March, it's over. So just say a scenario, they come up, the committee has a group, and they say, well, we found another property that's going to work. You're not going to be able to do anything for three or four months, you've got to do diligence, and sitting down with four architect firms, they want 12 months in design.
for the citizens, or they have the other, whatever parcel that might be, or parcels brought to them that allows us to bring it to the County Commission, to bring it back to this board to say, hey, this is good for what we need, it's good for Belmont, it's good for the citizens of this county, and then keep that on there. So I'll throw that out there, and Mr. Collier, that's it.
Mr. Brown?
I think that was in response to the pulling of the board, just to make sure we can green-sheet it, or we can have it once we have something that comes back to our committee through that. So that's why we're trying to say, we don't want everybody to get hasty in that regard, so that's why we wanted to make sure that we were doing our right thing of having it. We also want to make sure that if we need to move something new, we had the way to get it in there. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, I just want to clarify, you have full support from your Commissioners on that recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have a majority.
All right. School board members, any more comments, questions? Mr. Ramsey?
Yeah, I don't mind at all the collaboration that Chris talked about and Mr. Brown, but I am concerned about the timeframe. I think you don't realize the due diligence that we've done on this property, about three or four months of it, sitting down with City Council, Belmont Planning, doing soil surveys, all of it and above. Every checkpoint that we have on this property works. As Chris's presentation was, what he left out, there's a 21-acre pad sitting there for a school to sit without moving any dirt, and the architect guy will be able to tell you that. But that's what I got out of it, because other schools, you have to move a lot of dirt, and you're talking millions of dollars when you do that. I know you are concerned about the price upfront, but you're going to save money on the back end, two reasons. Belmont Middle School will be a very attractive, old-school developers' gift. Also, you have the opportunity to sell the property in there on Lakewood Road to recoup your money. So when this group gets together, you've got three weeks to put something together. Earl, when we sat down with them two weeks ago, he said the timeline is tight, and I mean, in the March, it's over. So just say a scenario, they come up, the committee has a group, and they say, well, we found another property that's going to work. You're not going to be able to do anything for three or four months, you've got to do diligence, and sitting down with four architect firms, they want 12 months in design, and we pushed them to eight months, just to meet this timeline. So if you're in June, trying to get something designed by November, it's not going to happen. So before you nick this whole deal, I really want you all to take a deep breath and look at the whole big picture here. The site is ready to build on. That's unbelievable. You can't find sites like that. You've got water and sewer, you've got all the traffic you need. Also, it's adjacent to South Point High School. We're looking at running the buses between, we can retain the property near Dr. Blow's and South Point Ridge. There's a road avenue we can get to. We can run buses without even getting on South Point Road. That's the other thing. And then also, just like North Gaston, WC Frey there, they share a lot of facilities together. That's what we're planning on with this property. We're planning on sharing facilities with each other all the time, and that makes a big difference when you're bringing two schools together. I know that you are concerned about the price and everything, but I think when you look at other properties, you're going to find out this is your best property, because the prep that you'll have to do to get this done, that's only my biggest concern, is your timeframe. If you can turn it around by March 28th and have a property sold and bought and do diligence, I'm all for it. And I would love to be on that committee. Thank you.
Mr. Worley?
Well, I would just ask the question, I know that we have $40,000 in earnest money in this property now. We also have engineering and legal fees, and what would they amount to? What's our total investment in this property as we move forward that we're willing to just throw away in the interest of saving money somewhere down the road? I've heard a lot of talk about saving taxpayer dollars, but we've made quite an investment in looking at this piece of property. So what would be the legal fees and engineering fees that we have involved now?
Well, frankly, the legal fees tab is still running, but...
Roughly?
On top of the $40,000.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
Worst-case scenario, if we pull the plug on this certain piece in Belmont, because we have already looked at plans for the building and other things, is there a way that, because that process has started, that the bond money can be pulled before it expires and set aside?
Mathers, you going to respond?
I'll respond to that. No, we have already exhausted the number of extensions that we're allowed to have, so I don't believe that we could get any additional time.
Can I have a second part to that? What all has to be accomplished prior to issuing the bonds?
Well, in North Carolina, there's a lot that needs to be accomplished. Obviously, site acquisition and design, design clearly needs to be customized to that particular site, even if you're using kind of an off-the-shelf design, it still would need to be customized to some extent. And of course, you have to, first of all, you know, go through the process of getting an architect on board. So after the design is completed, then you're going to have to go through a bid process for contractors. And in North Carolina, you have to have bids before we can go to the local government commission, who has the authority to give us the final go-ahead to proceed with the bond sale. So clearly, all of this is pretty time-consuming.
Ms. Roberts, any more questions? All right, Ms. Cherry?
Kevin? I've got a question.
I'd like to know for clarification's sake, since this is a unanimous or majority vote, what are your main concerns? What are your top three concerns about this property? Because I've heard bits and pieces, but as the consensus, what are your main concerns?
Mr. Philbeck? I'd like to answer some, actually, it's going to be some of my questions.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I'm speaking for me, I'm not speaking for the board. I don't know if I have a concern with the property as much as, there's been no information presented to us as a board to evaluate, is this the best location? What properties were looked at? Are any of those issues? Other than, I think, Commissioner Worley and Commissioner Brown, the last meeting before we went to Washington, I don't think anybody else on the board has seen or heard anything. Our job, we deal with the budget, and the bottom line is, it's the money, and we have to set the tax rate. So for me, before I make a decision on a piece of property like this, I need to make sure that I can go to the taxpayer and say, hey, these, every single area, every single dot, I mean, T's been crossed, I's been dotted. I cannot say that, and I'm basing that off of information, one, lack of information, number one, and number two, these are some questions I have, and I need to know if they're true. Now, Mr. Collier said that he was the chairman of the Operations Committee, and he dealt with the, I guess, finding the properties?
I made it aware of many brokers, real estate agents, and developers, that we were looking for property in the Belmont area for a new school. I didn't define the school at the time.
Who was on the Operations Committee at that time?
Mr. Howell, Mr. Dedman, Mr. Upchurch, and myself. Yes, sir.
I guess my next question, I guess, Mr. Howell, I could address this to you. While you were on the committee, were you presented with any other properties, other than this 78-acre property?
No.
So that's a no?
That's a no.
Okay. Once Mr. Collier became chairman, did any of the property dealings continue to go through Operations Committee?
Only those one particular property.
Just the 78? Okay.
I'd like to clarify something there.
Okay.
This property dealing took place before I became chairman. I called many of the Commissioners right after the election to let them know that we were looking at this particular property, just below South Point, to let them know that we were considering it. And I called both outgoing members and the new incoming members to make sure that everybody was aware we were looking at this property in November. This was before I was chairman, before December, before I became chair.
I guess my next question is, if the Operations Committee really didn't see any other property other than the 78 acres, I guess, has your full board actually reviewed in detail any other property other than this 78 acres? Have you all?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dedman?
I was on the Operations Committee, not the entire time. We talked about, in Mr. Howell's defense, or our defense, he wasn't at all of our meetings at the time that I was there. I missed one operation meeting since I've been on the board in that particular summer. He missed quite a few. But we did talk about not letting it get out, that we were trying to find some land, okay? Because we knew immediately that the price of land, when you start going around town saying you need to build a new school, it immediately gets even more than this price right here. I mean, this land is appraised at $78,000 an acre, and we're offering 65. But we did have conversations, not on a specific piece of property, but that we, and, you know, also, we want the property to be in Belmont. We don't want to build a middle school, call it Belmont Middle School, and put it down at Stog, you know, somewhere else other than, not in Belmont. I mean, that would be kind of ridiculous to do that, so.
Again, my question is, has your board reviewed any other properties as a full board? Because you voted to buy this land, I'm assuming everyone has looked at other properties and all of that's been shared. I'm...
Mr. Ramsey?
Mr. Philbeck, our committees work as a committee together, and then they'll do a recommendation to the full board. This was a recommendation from our Operations Committee, that this was the best property and the research they did.
So when the full school board voted on it, there was no other option?
They said this option was the best one. We've always done this. This is not our first rodeo. You can look around, we've got 55 schools, and since I've been here, I think we've got five.
I'm with you, but when I hear from people in the Operations Committee saying, hey, only one piece of property was presented, no other properties were presented, and the only property that was presented to the school board was one piece of property, and keep in mind, the Commission and the school board never meant to discuss any of this, and then it's, okay, let's vote on this property, it's the best deal, how do you expect us to go to the taxpayer and say that? We don't know.
We do know. That's your problem. It was presented to us, the pros and cons of, everything on the checklist was checked, like I said.
Were you on the Operations Committee?
No, I'm talking when it came to the full board.
So what other properties did you look at?
I'm telling you, I was not on the Operations, I'm on curriculum, but the Operations Committee does recommendations, just like curriculum and Doc Guthrie.
But Mr. Howell, who sits on the Operations Committee, said no other properties were discussed.
Well, Mr. Howell was absent a lot. You might need to check on that. Tracy, let me, let's say, do I tell you how to do your business?
No.
Okay.
Guys, I'm, all right, hold on. Listen, I want to, Mr. Ramsey, I want to have a civil discussion here.
I'm trying to clarify these questions.
I understand, I think it's a fair question. Ms. Guthrie, would you like to make a comment or try to answer the question?
First of all, I want to say to the Commissioners that we fully respect our committees, and we, as professionals, believe that when we sat on a given committee, that they are going to bring back to the whole board what they feel is best recommended by the board as it relates to curriculum or to the building committee. I am sitting here thinking that I am looking at the acquisition of the land from an educator's perspective, and I'm somewhat disturbed by the main focus. I do feel that the site is logistically feasible, and I say that because I'm thinking about the schools and how the educators can collaborate and work together to create career and technical education for our children, and to move them forward academically and prepare them for life skills and the future. If we look at the site that we're discussing currently and think about the goals and the missions of both the schools, let's look at the children. We can have our teachers collaborating together, we can have our younger children mentored by some of the older students at South Point High School. We have peer tutoring all the time, and it's a win-win situation when you look at it from the educational perspective. I don't understand why we would have to ask our committee to bring to us more than one recommendation if we feel that they have best researched and acquired all of the basic information, and we have brought that to you tonight. I just feel like I trust the committee well enough to know that if they bring to us something, we're going to save time by accepting their recommendations. I chair the Curriculum Committee, and certainly, we try to bring before our board the best that we can as it relates to the curriculum for Gaston County Schools. So I am very concerned that we would need to have three or four. That's a waste of time when we feel like we are all professionals and that we can work together to make certain that we are doing what's best for our children. I do believe that tonight, based on the letter that the Belmont, I think, council or mayor sent to us, they voluntarily offered their support in whatever way they could enhance the acquisition of this land and help us as we look to build a school that's adjacent or near the high school. They have given to us their support. The committee has made a wonderful recommendation, I think, and the ultimate focus here would be our children and the expected outcome of having these two schools work together. And the land is feasible, I just don't understand what else we need to do.
Well, again, I don't want to be defense, create any argument between us.
Oh, no.
But because the boards have not met, all I have to go on, for me to vote, I'm not talking about the board, for me, is, this is a piece of property, we think you should buy it. I don't have, hey, how do I know it's negotiated to the very best that we can for our taxpayer? I don't know that. What other locations were looked at, so that we can say, hey, every other location was ruled out? So for me, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job, but for me to make an informed decision, invoke to raise my hand, this is the last little bit of bond money we have. It's going to be very hard, I think, to even get another bond package to go through. So the last thing we want to do, I mean, we did Stewart Kramer. We've got properties sitting in front of Stewart Kramer that was bought to build a school on that we can't even build a school on. So, you know, number one, we don't need all this property, but again, hey, buy this property, we can either build another school on it or extend, but I have no information, other than the school board saying, hey, this is what we need you to do. So for me, this is all I need. I need information of what was looked at, what were the other choices, why this is the best location, why it's the best deal. You know, can we still have an opportunity to buy half of the property instead of all of it? I would fully support that, just so you'll know. I would not have an issue with that. So that's what I want to say.
Mr. Howell?
So, Mr. Brown, Commissioner Collier, there's already a stand-in recommendation from Mr. Brown on the floor, that they, the Commissioners put an ad hoc committee together. Mr. Worley, Mr. Hovis, and Mr. Philbeck, I volunteered to be on the ad hoc committee for the same purposes on this board, so as Mr. Ramsey, we're less a third. I think the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to vet the property, and to answer your question. So if we can vet the property and the property's good, we go forward. If we can't vet the property, then we look to what the next issue is, and I think that'll eliminate a lot of what was shown, what was not shown, because we can go into that, and for the sake of being thrown under a bus, I missed two meetings over the summer because of my regular job, but I don't apologize. And I know this, from talking to Mr. Worley this morning, having breakfast with him, we're committed to seeing this through. So it's not going to be an ad hoc committee that drags its feet and lets get together next week. We need to start now. There's a timeline here, it needs to be done. All I'm asking is for the two Commissioner Chairs to get together, put the ad hoc committees together, put them together, and let's vet it and move on, and let's bring it back to the both full boards, from your board's perspective and my board's perspective, of does it work or does it not work? And that's all I'm asking that we do.
May I ask one more question?
Ms. Guthrie?
I don't have breakfast with anyone except the children whom I serve daily, but I do want to ask, is it possible to buy half of the...
I believe the answer to that question is no. And just for the, you know, for the record, I tried, I mean, look, I personally tried to get that transaction done, and that's, in part, I mean, really, it's the advantage of having MB Realty in the transaction. The home run that we were, in fact, trying to hit, and you can look at the meeting minutes, and it's where we started in November, was to try to get half the property bought for $65,000 an acre, and undoubtedly, a half the land for 65 an acre is a better financial deal than all of the land at 65 an acre. But what I would just encourage everybody, both in the committee and then in the whole, is to really just make the choices off the practical, real-life options that are on the table. And, you know, look, I tried to negotiate the deal with the residential developer, did not come to fruition. I've got my own thoughts on why that could be, if you look at the values of the property, and it probably is because 65,000 an acre for the front is a really good price, because that's the most valuable part of the property. But I think all that discussion, I mean, folks, look, I'm in favor of... I'm in favor of the idea of, you know, vetting and comparing, as long as what I would just encourage everybody to do is I, hey, it's the first time I've met with you all, but I'm going to share something that's come up in my practice over the 20 years. You know, I hear a little bit of an echo. It's always, you know, you can get in these conversations of comparing it to kind of the utopia site, right? I mean, what would be ideal would be a 35-acre flat piece of land that's perfectly square on a big road with no traffic that somebody would give to you for free, right? I'd like to get that deal. But it doesn't exist. The real choices, you know, multiple choice on the table are the three choices on this site that I told you. It's 65 for the whole, it's walk, it's condemned. And hey, fair point, you know, I'm not the site selection guy on the legal side, right? And so if it's helpful to take a look at vetting it compared to some others as a discussion, you know, I've got no objection to that from a legal perspective. I understand it. I would just encourage the very quick timeline. I did just want to make sure everybody understands the timeline is not driven just by the bond vote, but it's also driven by the contract. And the contract dates we have aren't just made up. They're keyed off of the dates that the developer has with the underlying charity as the property owner. And so there's just, there is some reason to it. And again, if we need better communication and more communication, and we don't really have a shared understanding of protocols and, you know, whose role is what, I think you all just need to keep talking until you get there.
Well, Mr. Philbeck, and then I'll have Mr. Keger, and then Mr. Grant.
I have two questions, and I'll be finished. One, I just want to reiterate, not trying to tell anybody how to do their job. But my job, before I vote, is to make sure I have all the information that I do possible. And because our boards have not met, what you're giving me is one choice. That's it. And if I have that one choice with no information, I vote no. So the best thing we can do is to enlighten us with all the choices and all the options so we can make a better decision. Second, that was more of a statement, but my only question left is this. Is there anything in the works with swapping out the property we have at Stewart Kramer with any of this property that anyone here knows of?
I can speak to that.
You speak, and I can speak. We both know a little something.
The gentlemen have been in touch with Mr. Bringswatt, trying to see if that was a possible deal. Mr. Bringswatt?
I'll speak generally.
I would, I'd like to just say one thing first, is that my focus from the get-go, and I felt pressure from the commissioners, was to find a land swap for the Stewart Kramer site, for the new Belmont site. In my discussions with, with the professionals out there, and as Mr. Deven said, it was a strategic move to try to keep this under the radar, our search for property. And as we talked with the people out there, I tried to drive this land swap for the property would be the best thing for everybody in the county. I was trying to hit the home run. In the end, this was the only offer that was brought to us. Nothing ever came concrete of any, anything else. And maybe to my fault, trying to hit the home run may have been part of that. Mr. Philbeck?
I would like to see that land come back to the county. And maybe we could use those funds to offset whatever we purchase.
Mr. Philbeck, I think that our board, and I think that our board would be very supportive of that idea. I think that our board would be very supportive of making excess land we have on this property available back to the county, if that's what this commissioner, commission board sees fit.
Do you think we could sell it for $65,000 an acre?
That, I don't know. You know, the market in selling government property is quite a, quite an issue. Mr. Bringswatt, if you'd like to talk to the land swap opportunities that were in discussion?
Yeah, just briefly. And, look, I've just met you folks. I want to, I don't want to, look, you're going to need to go talk to your own attorney here, too. I don't want to come off like, you know, I'm telling you all what to do the first time I've met you on things, okay? But let me just, on the, on the surplus, on the surplus side of things, okay, what the, what the state law is, is that sale of surplus money either goes to pay down the debt or to go to a new school capital project, okay? So I risk getting into the business a little bit. I couldn't agree more that a home run would look like liquidating property that is not being used for the taxpayers' benefit. If you could turn it into cash and offset whether it's this project or the next one or what have you, that's certainly to me would be a kind of conversation I'd encourage the boards to have, and would think that would be a positive. Commercial real estate is part of what I do for a living. I want to caution everybody on timelines, okay? These things are not quick practically, okay? So without, you know, I had a, I've had a call from broker, you know, knowing that I've got, I guess my name got in the paper, and somebody called me and they know what I do for a living, said, what do you know about it? Okay, so I got that call. The likely timeline for property at Stewart Kramer or for the excess property here on a, I'm going to say a normal, you know, commercial or residential, you know, mixed deal, it's going to be six to 12 months, okay? It's going to be six to 12 months. The idea that somehow that's going to come together in two weeks with anybody, you know, that's not going to happen.
You're buying it, you're selling it at the same time. I'm just saying. That was bought to put a school on. It's not going to happen. So I'd like to see that property come back to us before we vote to do anything else.
Mr. Keger, you had a question?
Well, not really. Just wanted to put my two cents in. And I think it was Mr. Ramsey said this in their first rodeo, and it's by far not our first rodeo. We've got Mr. Hicks there. We're in the property business every, every month of every year. So we're not, we're not neophytes to this. But I just want to, you know, most people here know that Mr. Philbeck and I have disagreements on somewhat a regular basis, but I've got to agree with where he's coming from as far as the comparing. And I sat here thinking while he was talking, you're going to have major surgery, you're going to get a second opinion. Spending $5.1 million is a major purchase. Why we don't have the committee, why the committee didn't come back, that's not my deal. You guys are elected to do that. But it seems like there was a little bit of, the most responsible path, to me, doesn't look like it was taken there. When you bring a full board, and I sit around at meetings on committees and hospital boards, and a committee of three will bring back something to 16 members, and they vote on it, no second is needed. And I tried to do what, what Mr. Philbeck was doing, and try to find out more, investigate a little more. If I'm the one responsible, you go out and buy a house. I don't think many people are going to go look at one house and go spend $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 on one house. They're going to look at several. That said, when I checked with staff, EDC, the manager's office last week, and I'm not saying this thing is worth looking at, but supposedly not far from this site, off the South Point Road, there's 40 acres available for about $1.8 million. Even if it needed a million dollars worth of surface work or whatever, we're still going to have the opportunity someday to sell the property over at Cramerton. And the taxpayers will receive that money back. But I just, and I guess the biggest disappointment, disappointment to me in all of this is, I read about it in the paper. I'm asked to write the check or be one-seventh of a check, and I have to read about it in the newspaper. And I just think that was a little shortcoming also. That's it.
Mr. Ramsey?
Well, I want to commend the county commissioners. We'll go back 10 years ago, when the bonds was passed in 2007. We're supposed to rate the tax rate at 10%, but after we spread out the bond money, it went up to zero. That's powerful. You saved the taxpayers a lot of money in Gaston County, when you distributed $175 million. And thank you all for being here tonight.
Mr. Grant?
Would you suggest, would you like to raise the tax rate?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grant, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Collier. Just a couple of things. I rode out to the property there on South Point Road this morning, just to take a good physical look at it and to see. And a couple of questions came to mind. When the land at Stewart Kramer was bought, with all intentions of putting another school out there, I guess was at the time going to be a middle school. And then I'm told, well, we've got this property, but we can't use it. You know, we can't get a conditional use permit for a school. And schools are not tax-generating properties. So a lot of people want them, they just don't want them in certain areas. But let's say that land on South Point Road is purchased, and you've got the rear portion of it that I've heard could be developed. I'd like to see the due diligence report on it, because as it flashed through the screen, I was, that was the first time I've seen anything on it. And I did see something that said a couple of creeks on there. And it went by pretty quick. Could we get a copy of that?
Yes, sir. And in fact, I can go dig up a site plan for a residential site plan that was planned for that whole development. Mr. Grant, I'd like to address the Stewart Kramer property, that we say we can't build a school on it. The fact is, we can build a school on it. I believe that would be a huge mistake. That would tear wound in this county between the city of Cramerton, who has made it known to everyone in this county that they do not want a school on that site. They want it for multi-purpose development, and they have made that clear in many, many meetings. They would fight this school board and the commission tooth and nail to keep from getting a site, a school built there. In the end, I think we could win the battle, but I don't know that you win the war. And with that, Mr. Grant, to move Belmont Middle School to Cramerton would also open up another wound in the Belmont community to remove their middle school from their downtown central area and put it in Cramerton. So that is two wounds that I don't think we would ever recover from, from this board or the commission, if we wanted to win that battle. And the third thing is, there's Colonial Gas Line that runs through that property. It is a challenging property to put a large building pad on with the topography as it falls off for a school site. We knew that it would be a tough site for a middle school when we looked at it and the idea was floated out there. But as soon as that idea was floated out there began, the pushback, I'm going to say, from the city of Cramerton. So to your point, it is almost unusable, but it is something we could fight and win if we chose to do so. I wouldn't advise that. I don't think our board would advise that. And to Mr. Philbeck's point earlier, I think our board is completely open to pushing that back to the county commissioners, if they see, because there's a lot of interest in that property. I mean, I cannot tell you how much interest is in that corner property. All the developers are scared to death of having to go through an upset bid process to acquire the property. The other idea is to set a price and auction it off on the courthouse steps. Developers and real estate people are much more calculated than to take chance at an auction for property. So that scares them away. Mr. Bringswatt has experience, and what people he has talked to, I know for a fact that he's encouraged them, if they want the property, to go through the upset bid process. He has actually encouraged them to not be scared of the process. So I think it is doable that the county can sell that property. And I think, I can't speak for my board, I have to get at least five people to raise their hand.
And I understand your points and concerns, but I never got to finish my question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grant.
My question was, if the property at the rear of the South Point Road property was acquired and said, well, you could put a school back there, what's to keep it from coming up later and say, well, no, you can't put a school there either? Because eventually, you're going to have to replace South Point. And I think that it would be prudent to go ahead and put together a committee to start planning down the road and saying, this is our replacement model. This is the way we want to do the things. And then I heard that you could put bus traffic through the neighborhood. When I was there this morning, I looked and I saw the South Point Dentistry Office there, and I saw the neighborhood that would be between the two properties. But my concern would be, how long is it going to be before we get a complaint from the neighborhood saying, hey, you've got to stop pushing school buses through our neighborhood every morning? I'm open to all options, but I do feel like that we didn't get enough information from the beginning. And, and yes, you did contact me after I was recently elected and tell me that you were looking at property, but that was the last part I heard of it. But I think that open communications is the key to getting this thing resolved. Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Grant. And Mr. Howell?
So without belaboring this, I'll try to answer your question, just to your question about, is the land usable on the backside for a school? So in the architectural presentation which was presented to us, we talked about other options for the backside of the property, because obviously, we don't need the backside for a middle school, just the front side. Between what you saw as a natural draw through that property, which I think is also probably a creek, that the question became, was that a protected creek or not a protected creek? One census was that it was not a protected creek, one that it was. Either way, it's a, all four architectural firms said it's a workaround for us. So when they talked about the property from the front half, from the Belmont Middle, they also had their little 3D models. And they said, if you want to do an elementary school, here's how you could set it back here in the back. It would take a little more land prep work for a larger pad. But that was a doable thing, according to the architectural firms that we interviewed. I think almost all of them had that model, saying that you could do this if you wanted to. That's why you also see the property in that last slide I showed you, where everything was kind of shifted to the middle, which allowed some of that to happen as well. So that's there. But again, it goes back to my point, that I think if we just go ahead and call it and put this ad hoc committee together, we could answer a bunch of these questions tomorrow. And that ad hoc committee can come sit with you guys, and that ad hoc committee can sit with us guys, from your point and from our point, and share a lot of valuable information, some of those which we have answers today probably, and some of those we don't. So I'll put that back out there again.
Mr. Brown, you want to yield to Mr. Grant?
Go ahead.
Just want to ask one more question. We've heard about how valuable the property is. And in the residential sector, we've noticed that houses have gone from having big yards to being a smaller footprint and going up. Outside of the conventional box, has anyone with your design team or anybody ever considered building schools multi-story and going up instead of out?
So let me address that. According to the architectural firms that we interviewed, almost all of them, to the T, talked about a footprint that either goes wide or goes high. In a middle school, that's a doable thing. In elementary school, you really don't want to get into multi-levels with kindergarten through fifth grade. But the ones that presented to us, there's a program, and I wish I could tell you the program, Mr. Bellamy probably could, where when you show the footprint of the school, the actual pad itself, and when you go up versus going out, it shows the amount of dirt that you got to bring in to the amount of dirt that you got to take out. Going up created very little dirt movement. And so that was a plan that we looked at, when we were looking at it, and we were thinking, okay, so a two, possibly three-story, by using the topo of the land, because what you do is where it falls off, that becomes a bottom level. And then the middle level, which would be second story, becomes your walk-in level. And so you're able to go up three floors. I think you're seeing where we're doing that in one of our schools already. So that is a viable option. And you are correct, when you condense the footprint, you also reduce the price. But again, that's, those are questions in vetting the property, as we talk about this. You're right. Some houses are going to very small footprints and going up. But come out there beside me at McLean Property, in the section right beside me, they're selling acre lots for lots of money. So it's, it's what we need to do. I've always said, if you're going to build a school, build it where you can expand it later. And the best way to expand is to go up. So, thank you.
Mr. Grant, is that all?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to make one last statement regarding something Mr. Ramsey had spoke about earlier. When the Stewart Kramer bonds were let, that was a finite number that the commission had to deal off of. And that being said, whether we were to sell that property or do anything, that, that's not going to just stop a 20-year bond from dropping how that goes. So the commission has done a commendable job in keeping the tax rate. So the commission has done a commendable job in keeping the tax rate with that. So one of the things I wanted to add to that is with a second piece of property in the back, that extends our bond package on a new number. It's not going to be the part of the commission package, the bond package we did with the Stuart Kramer property. That's already being paid for. So going forward, now we have up to 40 million that could be out there. So I wanted to let it be known that that's not just money that goes away because that's extended over a period in the bond package timeline. The other statement I wanted to make is, and I'd like to just suggest this, this is not any disrespect to anyone in Belmont. I think they've bought a time for making it a viable community, but I also think that every taxpayer in this community of Gaston shares in this money. So I would say that we could look either on other sides, whether it be Cramertown, Mount Holly, and it doesn't have to have the name of Belmont Middle. We've had names. We could have Lee Dedman Middle School, which was a fine middle school teacher, principal myself. So I say that to say that we shouldn't be just have our blinders on. We know that we want the bedroom community type of schools. I get that. But I also want to say this committee has to look outside of maybe going a mile outside of their comfort zone if we have to, to be able to have everything vetted in this process. That's why I want to make sure that we do have some schools that are in the communities. I do get that. But you know, if we look at Cramertown, it's on the backside, it's not even near their downtown type of atmosphere. So just wanted to let that be out there and be known from some of the comments that we've had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hovis?
Thank you, folks, for allowing us to be here tonight and for us to have some collective conversation because as has already been said by several of my Board of County Commissioners, that hasn't happened and it's very helpful and refreshing. As a point of full disclosure, I want to share with the Board of Education and my commissioners one thing that they probably don't know. In February of 2016, I spoke to Kevin Collier in Lowe's in Belmont. And I made the comment to Kevin, you need to find a site and build Belmont Middle. Kevin made the comment to me, the Board of County Commissioners doesn't want to turn loose to the bond money. And I said, Kevin, you don't have a choice. You need to find a site and we need that site now. Here we are a year and a month later and we're still talking about a site. And this is no disparaging comment to him, but I'm just saying, there's no question, we need this school. We've been very fortunate in Gaston County to have two fairly recent bond packages, the 2001 and 2006 bond package. And the voters in Gaston County fully understands the needs of public education in terms of facilities. They've overwhelmingly approved both of those. And I was fortunate to be the chair of the 2001 campaign and was part of the Facilities Task Force to put together the roadmap for both of these bonds. And we in Gaston County cannot afford to let this last part of this bond money go by. We cannot afford to do that. We need to put aside some concerns to some degree and come build consensus. And consensus is what we are elected to do. They're tough decisions and I know that's where Tracy's trying to come from and he wants to be able to back you folks up with data. We need to be data-driven. I came in here not knowing that our chair was wanting to put together a joint committee of the two boards and he asked me what, and I said, I'd be more than happy to be a part of that. I think that's a good effort to find out exactly where we are and find out what we can dust off of where the current plan is and understand how it compares. We can ask some questions that may not have been asked to answer some of the questions that Mr. Philbeck and Mr. Keger and Mr. Grant have asked as well. I think there's definitely room for some synergy. I'm more than happy to do that. All I ask is that we do these meetings in the evening because I have a real job during the day and some other people do too. And I'm not knocking on anybody that doesn't, but I'm just saying, I will make my evenings 100% available to this committee from now until we come back to get the opportunity to come back and present to both entities what we find. And I mean that because when I was on the Facilities Task Force, we met every week for four hours a night in this room. And it was 37 parents throughout the county who did that. And you know what? We had 97% attendance. That's strong. And what that means is the commitment of our parents who take on a responsibility to be a part of that group. The strongest thing you as the Board of Education have and we as county commissioners is we have a dedicated electorate who wants Gaston County to move forward, who wants the best for their students. We need to continue to hone that tool and make that tool work for all of us. And I'm starting to preach a little bit and I'll kind of be quiet. But no, I fully agree with that. And I want to make one question and I will make sure I understand it clearly. The current site that the Board of Education has recommended is still in play. For us to consider. I want to make sure everybody, I want to make sure all the Board of County Commissioners agree that we can continue to use that. I didn't say you supported it. I'm saying that we can continue to use that. Because if there's closed minds to that, there's no use in this committee spending a tremendous amount of time. I'm just saying, are we open-minded and we're willing to look at the facts as presented by this group?
Mr. Brown?
And that's a serious question.
I'll put from our board is what we've talked about so far. When we made the statement, it was a statement saying we would not support it as is. So that was without the information we had today. And that was just going forward to let everybody know what was out there. So we wanted to push forward. So I think we would be...
I'm a blunt person. I just want to make sure that the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners agrees that we're going to, we've got a fresh piece of white paper. We're going to look at that and we're going to come back with information that will help us explain to the public, the electorate, the students, the parents, where this decision came from and where we've come from with it. And I want to make sure that that's still on the table. And I think it should be.
Mr. Keger and then Mr. Dedman, I'm sorry.
My last comment. First, I would suggest that this committee, I would say by Monday, get together. Tomorrow, over the weekend.
Tonight.
And well, they've got a work session when we leave. But I would also say that from talking to commissioners and my own personal thoughts, I would say that this task force, even if this property off South Point is going to still be in play, work like it's gone. There's a difference. Because if you go into this and your mindset is, well, we're just going to juggle around some meetings and we're going to go right back to it. So I would say, go work and this project's off the table as far as the committee's concerned.
Mr. Dedman?
I agree with Mr. Hovis and everything that you said, Mr. Hovis. I really do, I appreciate that. I'd like to serve on that committee also. And the second thing I'd like to do is that when we're done with this committee, I would like you to put it back on your agenda because I do want the people of Belmont to know, we have worked really hard at trying to get this school. We know that that money is going to be gone and we know that we're going to have a hard time. But I'd like everybody to know that we didn't do this, okay? We did not facilitate this to get to that point. And I'm not saying you all did and Tracy, I understand what you're saying. But I want everybody to be very clear that, you know, they need to know who votes which way, which for. And when Mr. Brown just said, hey, the whole board, I'd want to see a hand go up to say, you know, why didn't you vote for it? And if you want to say what you say, that's fine. But I think that's something that needs to be done in the end. But I do agree, I'd like to serve on the committee and I do think that we can work something out.
Early, then Mr. Hovis?
I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Keger on this. I think we need to work, we can't start from scratch on locating property and evaluating sites. I think we need the top three sites from the school board to look at those sites and certainly consider this one we're talking about tonight or the other two if possible. I just don't feel like we have time to start from scratch.
Saying what I did is that they've already done all the due diligence on this one site. There's no sense to go reinvestigate it. Heck, you know, look at new sites if they're available.
I agree with you.
As if there is no site on South Point.
I agree with you. They have done all the due diligence on this site. But the argument has been that we didn't have that information that they have on this site. So I think if better communication or we can get more information about this site that you all are asking for, then we still consider this site as number one and we look at two and three as well. But I don't believe that we have time as a committee to go out and locate a new piece of property to be evaluated and get it in time for this bond.
Well, if there's time, in all due respect, why are you going to serve on it? If you don't think there's time to do it?
To evaluate completely new property that's not even been considered from the school board?
And there, as I said earlier, lies a problem that there's no comp to compare it to. Only one piece of property was looked at.
Well, Mr. Keger, they've looked at as many as 10 pieces of property that I'm aware of, 10 pieces of property. And I know they have a top three.
I didn't hear that tonight.
I know you didn't hear it tonight.
And it wasn't brought up by the committee that studied it? They just said it was just one brought to them.
Well, that was in a meeting that was held between Mr. Collier, Mr. Ramsey, Mr. Brown and myself. If you didn't get that information from that meeting, that's not your fault, but...
But we just asked a question and the committee said they only saw one property.
I'm not talking about what the committee saw. I'm talking about what we saw in the meeting that we had with the joint chairs and vice chairs.
Mr. Hovis?
Well, Mr. Keger, I understand your comment and all I wanted, my statement was to just make sure that we can be open-minded and looking at the data that the Board of Education already has accumulated. Because I know they have other information. I know, who all knows it, I don't know, but I know they have other information. So that we can look at that and I just want to make sure the board is in agreement that we can still consider the proposal that they have in hand equally, not necessarily giving it favoritism. That's all I'm asking. That was what I was...
That's what I stated, but I just said, let's pretend that we don't have that property and really work to see if there is a better deal, save millions for the taxpayers of the county, that's all. Shake the tree hard.
I agree with that.
And I'd say, Kevin?
Yes, sir. Mr. Philbeck?
I am completely open to looking at this property and everything else. The bottom line is, what he's telling me and what I just heard is two different things. So what you think about this? I'm sitting in a meeting as Gaston County Commissioner. My vice chair tells me something that your own board says is not true. So that's what I've heard.
No, two weeks ago, we met a course. We handed him a brochure with eight or nine copies.
Okay.
Each one of them.
I know you handed him a brochure. My question, no. And not only that, my question...
I can't help you on that.
Okay, hold on. Okay, my question is, and I asked you, did you go through these as a board? Yes or no? Yes or no?
No, Mr....
Is that a no?
No, listen, Worley was talking about two weeks ago. He wasn't talking about an operation committee.
I'm with you, but the information that you gave them...
I was not on the operation committee board at that time.
Okay.
You have the answer.
Anyway, here's where I'm at. I'm going to look at the property. I just need to know the facts of how you came about it, what other properties were looked at, so I can go to the taxpayer and explain my position. If I don't get that information, if I'm the only one, I will vote no. If you give me that information, we may can work together. But to date, I've got zero.
And I think that's the committee's goal, is to get the information and present it in an unbiased fashion with details.
That's my hope, Mr. Hovis. Ms. Roberts, you had a question or comment?
It's two parts again. Bottom line, everyone that's here and that's watching, I hope everyone is aware that, I want to speak for the commissioner, sorry, commissioners and the school board, that bottom line, we want a middle school in Belmont. That is our ultimate goal. We are hearing tonight that you are recommending us get together a task force. If that's the way that we can move forward, I'm all for that so we can move forward to give all the information on the current location and others, possibly others. And I'm sure there are probably several on our side that may want to be a part of that committee. But bottom line, we all have the same goal of giving Belmont a middle school because we all know that that is needed. But we also need to make sure that both sides are getting all the information, all of the information. With that said, and I had asked this before and maybe I missed it in one of our meetings, at one part, I had asked, out of this 78 acres, could we not put our school on the back portion? Am I correct in my assumption as the front portion would be more valuable and maybe easier to sell down the road if we needed to?
The front portion is certainly more valuable and that's supported by appraisal and your common sense point in that. So now the design question, I'm going to leave to architects and committee.
And also the back portion would help with traffic as well. Just want to put that out there.
That was Ms. Roberts. Mr. Howell?
Last time, I promise. So, Mr. Philbeck, to answer your question, the nine properties that were shown to the vice chair, the chair, the vice chair and the chair of county commission and school board, I did not see that as a full package prior to that meeting that night. So that answers your question. And going forward to answer that question, to answer on the next question, I'm committed to giving you whatever you need to do and explore it myself to make sure we ask the right questions on that piece of property. To Mr. Keger's point, I'm a lot like Mr. Worley. I don't know that you take it completely off the table because then you disregard the work that's been done. However, if there's another piece of property out there, if there is something that your EDC would like to bring, if there's a $20,000 an acre piece of property for 40 acres that we can put a suitable school on, that we can still call Belmont School, Belmont Middle School and not Northeast Corner School or something, I will raise my hand today to build it on it because that's a good price. But part of that committee's job, and it's got to be a job, as Mr. Hovis said, it can't be a hobby. It's got to be a job. And if we're going to go find that, let's go find it. But the more we stand here spending time talking about this one, the less time we have to start talking tonight about property. So I'll leave it at that. I'm done.
Mr. Dedman?
One last thing. I'd like to ask Mr. Mathers, did you say in the paper about a week or two ago that if we, if you let these bonds, that there will not be any increase in our taxes? Is that what I heard? That's what you said in the paper?
Yes, Dr. Dedman, that is a...
Dr. Dedman, I like, hey, let's name a school after me. I'll take that.
I would say that that was an assumption that I made based on my understanding of the positions that the county commissioners have taken recently. I do not believe that there is any reasonable prospect that they would be inclined to raise taxes.
All right. Thank you, sir. I just wanted it to be known that, you know, this is our last chance and I know, I'm with Mr. Howell on this one, we need to meet and meet quickly and get Tracy's answers or get four answers.
Okay, Mr. Worley and Mr. Grant?
Just real brief, check your email on 2/23 because you got the same email that I got that outlined these sites, the various sites. So I'm just saying, look at your email and you might perhaps find more information that you don't have tonight if you've read it.
And my point is, I'm sitting here in front of the board. I don't have to worry about an email and no one is telling me that before they voted that they investigated those. If they did, tell me I'm wrong. Okay.
Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question about the price. How much negotiating was done on the price or are we paying this price if we decide to do this?
Mr. Brandwald, I think you can speak to that.
That's me, a lot. I almost lost the deal over it and was trying to not, again, the history of the negotiations where we started off trying to do the, I guess, my words for the home run deal, was doing the half deal, okay? So $65,000 an acre for the front was to me the home run target deal. That's what we started with. That assumed a residential developer coming in, so it's sale of half to us, a sale of half to somebody else is the idea. So that was the starting point. That deal did not come together. The choice that was on the table, I can, I'll tell you, I assure you, I pushed on the number, is that the offer from the company that has it under contract and controls the property in the end was 65,000 an acre for the whole.
Okay. Do you know what they comped it to?
So I know some, a handful of financial data points, okay? I know that they are under contract at 59.9 for the whole, okay? So you've got a number that's 10% increase over that 59.9 number. I know that the appraisal by the, I mean, I appraisal company, a good company by the way, I mean, I know them from multiple transactions, that appraisal is at the 70-plus number because the front part of it's commercial and the back part of it's residential. So order of magnitude, you're looking at your six-figure numbers for commercial and you're looking at, you know, 40-ish, 50-ish kind of numbers for residential and you merge them together and then you're at that 70 number. So the way, you know, I personally have viewed it, is you've got data points of, from 59 to the mid-70s number. If you want kind of the thought exercise of, you know, well, if I got, you know, 10 other appraisals, what would I likely get? Probably numbers all in that range. You know, my perspective, back to the choices now, 10% over the lowest number you've heard of, if you want the site, and it's the site you want, that's a good deal. It's better than condemnation, it's better than losing the deal. And now you're going to circle back to your committee's conversation, is look, if you have another site that you like better, then you all have a conversation about that. But if we're on this site, we're back to the three practical choices.
Okay. Any more questions, Mr. Grant?
Well, I just understand that, you know, you have an asking price and a selling price, and you can say the land is worth X number of dollars per acre, but in actuality, it's only worth what somebody's willing to give and what somebody's willing to take. And I just don't necessarily believe in giving this price right off the bat. I think there needs to be some negotiation, and maybe there has been, I just don't know to what degree.
Yes, it wasn't right off the bat.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Grant, I'd like to say that the negotiations started in November and, for the home run, and then it took until the middle of January in negotiations to come to the price for the full piece of property. And especially after the appraisal from Integra Realty Resources, and you should have gotten a copy of that appraisal from that firm in that email. But when it came in at $6 million, Mr. Brinwatt had his work cut out to negotiate a price well under $6 million.
Mr. Howell.
I'm going to lie in the middle of a board meeting, so please don't tell the staff that I work with at the church. It's not my last comment. I'd like to know the process from you, because I've heard the commissioners say, are you willing to give back the property at Cramerton? As the operations chair, I've talked about that numerous times, that I don't have anything invested in that. It's taxpayers' money, taxpayer property. We can't build a school on it from everything that I hear from Cramerton down. I'd like to know, when can we make the motion, the second, and the vote to give that back to them in good faith? I want them to know that we're negotiating and not playing a game here. So if we don't need it, and it's a hook for them to say, hey, we know you're working with us, we're ready to work with you, when do we make that point? Because I'm ready to just say, let's have it, and let's get at it.
Mr. Brinwatt, I'm sorry.
Just on the fly, and I have to have a legal conversation about this, you're not legally allowed just to give school property back for zero. I mean, not, no, sir. The constitution of school property, I'll send you all an Institute of Government article, the school property has got to be sold, you've got to get consideration for it. Look, practically, can you work out that arrangement with the county and the school board for the value of the property to go to school capital or pay in down debt? The answer is yes. But there's a technical point to that. You can't donate the school property, even to the county, even to a municipality, even to, you know, the best purpose in the world. You're going to have to have the extra bit of the conversation over working together to sell the property and get some financial consideration. I think you're going to get to the same point, and then have it go to pay down the debt or go to the Belmont project. But I'll be happy to have that conversation.
But would it be only if it was purchased with bond money? Because schools and surplus buildings and land back to the county many times.
I just, I've researched this, I know it, I don't know, but the consideration, it's supposed to have consideration changing hands for school property.
Then, Mr. Ringwald, I'd be willing to sell it to them for $5.1 million.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to try to wrap things up, but I need a consensus from my board about this committee process. I've seen Mr. Moore acknowledge that he'd like to be on the committee. I've seen Mr. Howell acknowledge the same thing, and Mr. Dedman and Mr. Ramsey. That happens to be our operations committee as it is now. Ms. Cherry.
Mr. Collier, who, besides the three board members on the commission side, did, Mr. Brown, who else did you say from?
Mr. Philbeck, Mr. Worley, and Mr. Hovis.
Just those three commissioners, no staff?
The staff is appointed behind the scenes to that, along with Mr. Hicks from EDC.
I would like to make sure that some of our staff, obviously, was on that committee as well, too.
Absolutely, Mr. Cherry. Can I just see by a nod or just a raise of hands that our board is in consensus with this committee? Okay, all right. Mr. Brown, is it possible that the operations committee from this board, all four members participate in this?
Not a problem with us.
That's four against three. I just... Mr. Kegger, is that you wanting?
No, no.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to be part of the committee. Okay.
We don't have a quorum on there, so we can't do that. So three is...
I think that's perfectly fine. I think we can work together, and once we can sit down and look through the questions, I don't think any of that's going to matter. I think if we can take information back to both boards, that's all we're asking.
All right. I'm going to assign our operations committee, and Mr. Moore, Mr. Howell, Mr. Dedman, and Mr. Ramsey, to work with Mr. Worley, Mr. Philbeck, and Mr. Hovis on this ad hoc committee to vet property for the Belmont Middle School. Mr. Philbeck.
I would request, unless it is a piece of property that our attorneys tell us that we need to go in closed session, based off of everything that has surrounded this, this, when we meet, fully open to the public.
Yes, sir. I couldn't agree more. There are property concerns and conversations that are held to executive session. Okay. Yes, sir. I just make sure everybody's clear of that. Mr. Brown.
Well, Mr. Collier, I want to thank you and the school board members and staff for allowing us to come over tonight. I think we'll take our information tonight and move on, let you guys take into consideration your meeting, and we'll get these boards together. But thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, and we're going to take a break right now, and we'll reconvene to finish the Board of Education's work session agenda. Thank you.
For the school board work session, Mr. Howell had a revival he needed to get to, so I hope everyone will be understanding of his absence at the rest of the evening. And the next item on our agenda is the resolution for supporting local control of school calendars information. I am really sorry Mr. Howell was not here for this. He was leading the charge in this, so has everybody got a copy of the resolution? I think we read it this time and we vote on it at the next meeting.
Mr. Higgins is prepared to do your first reading, so that you may vote on it on the 20th.
Okay, Mr. Higgins, if you'll read the resolution. Mr. Usherie, if you'll read the resolution, sir.
Whereas the local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school district supervision and administration boards with which local boards of education have been vested. Whereas state law has usurped local control by imposing a one-size-fits-all mandate on how school calendars are to be set. Whereas by usurping local control, the current calendar law has led to a misalarming of the academic calendars for high schools, community colleges, and universities, causing scheduling problems and exam conflicts, particularly for early and middle colleges and high school students who take college courses. Whereas by usurping local control, the current calendar law has created a situation where fall semesters cannot be completed before winter break, forcing exams to be administered after the break. This means that students get no break without assessments and assignments pending. And whereas by usurping local control, the current calendar law has led to a decrease in the amount of instructional time students have prior to taking advanced placement and international baccalaureate tests. Whereas the state mandated calendar law strictly limits the number of days that can be scheduled as implement weather days, increasing the likelihood that districts will have to use make-up days to conflict with family plans and activities, including the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, spring break, and Saturdays. Whereas it is well documented through local studies that children experience learning loss during the summer months when they are away from the classroom and not engaged in educational activities, a phenomenon known as summer learning loss, which has a disproportionate impact on children who live in poverty. And whereas restoring local control, the school calendars will allow local boards of education to best needs, to unique educational needs, and school calendar performance preferences of the children and families within their communities by allowing for innovative experimental approaches to dealing with summer learning loss. Therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education requests that local control over school calendars be returned to the local boards of education, adopted by the Gaston County Board of Education on March 20th, 2017. Kevin L. Coller, Chairman, W. Jeffrey Booker, Superintendent of the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Usherie. Is there any discussion about the resolution?
The motion is read.
Well, that's the next meeting. This is the reading. Is there any recommendations for change of the language? With none, I hope that we will adopt this unanimously, and it's our next board meeting on March 20th. All right. All right, the next item on our agenda is the budget discussion and class-sized legislation. Mr. Gary Hoskins.
While Mr. Hoskins opens up the PowerPoint, just to the board, you'll see him walk through the calendar, so this is your first blush at this. And we're going to focus some energy on the K-3 class-sized legislation, because we have put that discussion off, and you all have been getting numerous information about that, but we felt it was important for you to see some of the numbers and how it actually impacted your budget, and shared with you what several of the large districts put out last week with theirs. And so that'll be a part of the focus tonight. Mr. Hoskins.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to hit some of the, I guess, highlights of our budget discussion. Just as an update for our budget calendar, I wanted you to know that we are on schedule to be able to present the superintendent's budget early April, April 3rd. As you know, we will have to deliver this budget to the Gaston County Board of Commissioners by May 15th, and we are certainly on schedule to do that as well. A lot of the other dates are really contingent upon the state. The governor recently came out with their budget proposal, but the General Assembly proposals will probably come out in the coming months, so we'll be certainly paying attention to that. In the budget process, some of the things that we talk about are what initiatives, new initiatives need to be funding, which programs need to be modified or eliminated, and how we prioritize the dollars that we're going to spend. Also, as we're looking at this, the budget process, we continue to monitor the effectiveness of the current budget. We identify impacts to changes that the state may have. The state has actually changed the initial budget 40 times so far this year. That's something that happens every year. We may get changes two or three times a week. Some of them may be very small changes, some may be big changes, but we continue to keep an eye on that and determine how that impacts our local funding. We solicit our input from shareholders, stakeholders. We talked about this at the board retreat, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a minute, and then identifying funding priorities and communicating those priorities to this board and to the superintendent. So the stakeholders that we surveyed included committees of the teachers, advisory council, the student advisory council, parent committees, leadership, and some community leaders, as well as our principals in this board. And the questions that we asked, and there were 22 questions, I think we've been asking this series of questions as to what your priorities are, or top five priorities are for funding for next year's budget. And this is the third year that we've done this, so we're starting to get some trend data. And as we look at this trend data over the last three years, it's no surprise that increasing the teacher supplement has been number one in each of those three years. But one thing that's very important is that three years ago, 84% of the people had this listed as one of their top five priorities. We've, as the board and working with the county commissioners, y'all have been addressing these concerns, and you can see that that number is coming down. It's gone from 84% three years ago to 68% this year, so a 16% decrease. So it does remain our number-one funding priority from the stakeholder's standpoint, but certainly we've been taking some positive steps to try to improve that. The second item is providing more choice options. And Dr. Boultonite talked in great detail about some choice options that we're looking at over the next couple of years. I think there's five or six different items that she talked about. Choice was not even one of the items that we talked about three years ago, but you can see that over the last couple of years, choice is getting a little more traction as far as being one of the funding needs that this community has, and we're in agreement with that. So when we roll out the budget, the superintendent's budget and talk in a little more detail, we will have some pricing options for you for a couple of those choice options that Dr. Boultonite talked about back in January. Increasing classified salaries, that again remains one of the top three items. I think over the last couple of years, the state and the county have increased their local salaries by 2% to 3% each of those years. We've not been able to do that, so that's continuing to be a concern that we have. We're losing some people as the economy is getting better. Certain industries are starting to pay more money and starting to pick off some of our valuable employees, so that's certainly a priority that we have, with trying to keep those people and pay them a market salary. And finally, the last thing I'll talk about is increasing the computing devices. I think Ms. Mattson talked about trying to move to a one-to-one school. Right now, we're 1.4. So the cost of doing that is another, I think, $8,600 devices. Chromebook devices are about $180 apiece, so we'll talk about the cost of moving to that one-to-one, which is our long-term goal, but we'll have that in the superintendent's budget as well.
One of the things I would like to point out to the board is if you look at the expanded CTE program offerings, that number is growing. So your first reaction will be, well, we have added a lot. I think that what you're seeing in the survey is people are responding positively to what you're developing, and this reflects the partnership with the business community and expanding what you have, and they're saying we want to continue that expansion. So you will see us to remain focused on growing our business partnerships and offering more opportunities in our career in technical education.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Guthrie.
Sure. We test on our Chromebooks, and every test that we could give on a computing device, we did this past year.
Oh, I'm sorry. One of the big items that we're going to talk about here is class-sized changes, and Mr. Booker alluded to this earlier. This is a big issue, and it seems like every budget year, there's always a big issue. It's usually something that's proposed that never comes to fruition, or it gets downsized to the point where we can sort of absorb it or find a way to work around it. This is a law that has already been passed. It is effective for the next school year, and it was passed with last year's budget. And so what this does is that this changes the mandated class sizes for average classrooms and for the maximum individual classrooms for kindergarten through third grade. And in addition, it does not provide any additional funding for the teachers that will be needed due to this change in the class-size regulation. Also, it will have the challenge of some space limitations for those schools that already tend to be full at this point in time. So right now, what we're talking about is just our K-3 population, and right now, we've got about 9,700 students enrolled in kindergarten through third grade, and we have 29 schools that serve those kindergarten-through-third-grade students. The first column that you see there is our actual numbers that we had at the beginning of the year, and the projected 2017-18 column is what DPI is projecting that we will have in the next year. So when we look at the last year's budget provided for a funded allotment ratio for kindergarten of one teacher for every 18 kindergarten students, and you'll see grade one is one for 16, and grades two through three is one for 17. So if you look down to the next chart, which it says 2017-2018 class sizes, that funded allotment ratio, that's how we get our teachers, is exactly the same next year as it is this year. So there will be no change in the teachers that we receive from the state. However, when you move to the last two columns, the maximum average class size and the maximum individual class size, there's some dramatic differences between the two. Right now, in kindergarten, as well as first grade and second, third grade, the maximum class size, the average class size, is 21 students per class. However, that will significantly decrease next year to 18 students in a class for kindergarten, 16 students in a class for first grade, and 17 in grades two through three.
Ms. Cherry.
I know you can't tell me per class, but do we have a lot of classes right now that are at capacity at 24 in these grades?
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Cherry, one of the debates across the state about this has been that people were not allocating or using their allocation properly, but you can look in the state allotment formula published by DPI effective July 1, 2015, and it cites these 21 and 24 as the way we're supposed to operate.
So what that would do for us is that we went through every single one of the 29 affected elementary schools. We looked at how many students were in kindergarten through third grade, and we have projected that we would need, based on this new class-size adjustment, we would need 70 new K-3 teachers. And just as a reference point, I think Wake County would need 480. So these teachers are going to be in high demand. They're going to be incredibly difficult to hire 70 teachers when every single LEA in the state of North Carolina is going to be hiring a lot of these teachers. And this would affect all 29 of our elementary schools.
Mr. Deppman.
Mr. Hoskins, we don't really have enough room in our schools, so will we have to change attendance lines to fill up some of these other schools? Because some of our schools don't have three or four other teaching spots that we can go to other than a closet.
Right. What we looked at is the next item is space limitations, and of those 29 schools, 17 or 90% or higher of capacity, in fact, eight are at 100% or more of capacity. So to Mr. Deppman's point, we would have to bring in some mobile facilities or do some other items to try to help alleviate that situation. One of the things that we've talked about is the magnet school, you know, where we're pulling kids from maybe some schools that are overpopulated to help fill that. So there are several different things we're looking at, and that is going to be one of the challenges that we're going to be facing.
One more question. Do you have teacher assistants in kindergarten each class?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And what about?
Just one for each, for all the first-grade classes. So that would not be affected, but we would also have to add TAs for every kindergarten class that we would add.
Yes, ma'am.
So with that being said, a lot of people in the education industry have gone to our General Assembly, expressed their concern for this, and a lot of the House members have listened, and they have created what they call House Bill 13, or HB 13. And it proposes to increase the average size of the K-3 classrooms from what the law is going to be next year by three students in each of those three categories, and also the maximum individual class size by six. Right now, HB 13 has been unanimously approved by the House. However, the Senate has sort of staked its claim on trying to drive down class size in the schools and has not yet brought this subject up. So that is an issue where we're still watching very closely. So what that means to us is that the bottom, the blue graph, is what would happen if HB 13 were to be implemented and approved by the state senate and signed by the governor, is that now you look at kindergarten in the blue, and kindergarten where we are now, there would be no changes. 1 to 21 average size, 1 to 24 maximum individual size. However, some of the first-grade, second-grade, and third-grade classrooms would be slightly smaller, but not as small as what the current law is going to require. So the difference between, or the potential impact between the current law and HB 13, under the current law, the 70 teachers that we talked about, bringing in some additional mobile units, the supplies, the TAs, et cetera, would be just over $5 million based upon our estimate. If HB 13 were to be enacted and approved, the same cost would dwindle down to 1.8 million, which is still a big number. It's a number we're going to have to absorb. However, it's nowhere close to the $5.1 million number that we're currently looking at. And just to put that in perspective, you know, our budget with the county is $45.3 million. So if nothing changes, that $5.1 million is over 11% or around 11% of our current local budget. So that is a big impact, and that's one of the reasons we're... additional asks that we're going to have of the county. On the flip side, the HB 11 impact is only 4%. Still a big impact, but certainly not as big. So the next steps is just to really monitor and prepare for the potential changes on the class size for K-3, document our new funding proposals that we talked about, based on the questionnaire, the teacher supplements, the choice, et cetera, and then identify the capital needs of the district and request sufficient funding from the county. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it over to you for questions.
One question.
Mr. Dedman.
I think we need to let our partners, the county commissioners, know about this way early. Because, I mean, if we could use their help in letting our legislators know that we need them to change this back, because this is going to put us in a tremendous bind. So tonight, they were asking for more transparency, and I think we need to make sure that we tell them about this, because this is really a very serious deal. And it's locked up in the state legislature. If they have anything added to the Education Committee, they've got it parked somewhere right now, just kind of sitting there. So we really need to get on the ball on this one.
Mr. Dedman, I'll get with staff, and I'll try to craft an email to send to all the commissioners and follow up with phone calls through their leadership. Ms. Guthrie.
I read, I think the superintendent sent an email out regarding an article in his program about arts and PE. Would that not have been, or overall?
We're not going to commit that that's what we would do. We're going to do, we're going to work hard to not do that. We do feel that there's a lot of value in arts and PE, and we will work hard to not do that.
And yes, ma'am, you're correct, Ms. Guthrie. That is one of the things that's been held up across the state. There's some very moving videos posted by the different organizations saying what their value is. We agree, this board, through the entire downturn, never did anything with our arts program except to increase the commitment.
Dr. Hoskins, are mobile units really the only avenue of choice if it does get to that?
Well, Mr. Dedman talked about lines, and we're talking about choice. And, you know, there are several other options. That is the most, I guess, obvious option would be to bring in some temporary mobile units. They may change this next year. They may see the impact that it's had and then change that. So, you know, Dr. Hushard and I have talked about leasing some units as opposed to purchasing those units in case that does change. So we're looking at a lot of options, but that's the one that I did put in here as far as the potential impact from a financial standpoint.
But there might be one school that just has one grade that needs the additional teachers, not all three grades.
Correct.
And Ms. Cherry, some of those calculations have been driven by the way the questions have been asked to the state, trying to do some evaluation across the state. The other concern, just like talking about teachers, there's only so much supply of mobile units. So you'll get caught into that same vortex. So we are looking at all options. This is something the legislature has been talking about since they went back into session, because the superintendents have been stressing, we're going to get into budget season, and we'll have to start making really hard decisions if we don't have some clarification.
Any more questions or comments? I would just like to encourage all our board members and any folks that are out there watching to please contact legislatures and let them know how we're in support of HB Bill 13, and especially Senate members that are sitting on this right now. So that's my encouragement to reach out to our legislatures of what you know and any folks out there. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is technology preparedness. And I think Mr. Booker and then Ms. Mattson.
We wanted to take a moment. You all, I'm sure, were very alarmed last month when there was a data breach in one of the school systems in North Carolina. It was a significant issue. We had that same attack on your system. So we thought it was worth you to understand that as we've moved to 1.4 children per device, what that means to the whole network and what you all have been a part of building. And Ms. Mattson will do the majority of the talking tonight, but she's got someone with her, Steve Buehler, who represents a group of folks that do yeoman's work at all hours of the night, protecting your network and keeping your network up. It is amazing the ability we have to operate a network at the high level they do. When you talk about people that have a network that's up 99.99% of the time, and when we have an outage, it's done by the providers, not on our side. Someone will cut a line somewhere that is not us. It's amazing what they do and the hard work. And so you just will hopefully get an appreciation for what goes on to protect your system and to supply these devices with the internet connectivity. So, Ms. Mattson?
Good evening, Chairman Carl. Your vice chairman, Ramsey, Board of Education members, and Superintendent Booker. I'm very pleased to have one of my senior network engineers with us this evening. We want to kind of talk about how we prepare to provide enough bandwidth and utilization for our schools. I think the first part, where Mr. Buehler is going to talk to you about a kind of overview of what our infrastructure looks like, I want you to pay close attention when he gets to the second and third slide, to see how long it takes to click through. And then I'm going to share with you how long it takes for a Chromebook to get on our network.
Thank you very much. First of all, this first slide I'm going to show here just shows a typical school in our district and how the network is designed. If you look, we have a main data closet, which is in the center of the screen. And then we have each individual IDF's, which are on the outside of the screen. At the bottom, you'll see a legend of the types of devices we use in the district. As you know, mostly now, we're using, we're turning to a lot of Chromebooks, which uses our wireless network. If you look here, over on the right side of the screen, you'll see three computers in the top right corner. Those are Chromebooks that would be out in a classroom. So for that student to get out to the internet, we have to go through a lot of different equipment to get out. So first step, they would go, they would connect through the access point, which is a wireless connection. And as you see, that's number two. And then from there, it moves to a switch, which is in our IDF closets, which is three and then four. And then from there, we have a fiber connection back to our main distribution closet, which is number five. From there, it has to go back to our main data center, which is our main data center, over our WAN connection, which is number six. So if you look on this next slide, in the bottom left, you'll see the WAN connection coming into our building. And from there into the closet, it goes through a number of different devices. So each one of these hops, as we like to call them, are what that computer has to go through just to get out to the internet. First, it goes through a couple of switches and then into our core, which is number eight. From there, that student's internet gets filtered, so we can see if the website they're trying to go through, go to, should be allowed to that user. So it breaks off to the left to number nine, and then hits our content filters, which then say yea or nay to the traffic. So if that student's allowed to go further to that website, it'll go back through the core and then up through the QoS policy manager. And what this device does is basically, it throttles our traffic. So if a student is trying to go to Gmail or Gaston County School Mail, they have higher priority than someone trying to go to a gaming site or something like that. So from that point on, it'll go through our firewall, which protects us from people trying to get into our network and anyone trying to get out of our network. At that point, it goes through a distributed switch, which basically, that is our last stop where it's on our network. From that point forward, it hits outside of our network, which is the MCN network, and then to the internet. So then, once it gets to the website and comes back, it has to go back pretty much all the way through our entire network, just to get back to that child's computer.
How long does that take?
That was my next line. So you saw that the child's Chromebook just took 18 hops. That takes eight to 10 seconds after they log in. So, over the last month, during the school day, we averaged just a little over 441,000 concurrent connections at any given time. We would have an average of 24,000 computing devices logged in or connecting during the day. So it could be that one user logs in and another logs out, but an average of 24,000 every single day. When I talked to you earlier this year, we discussed our bandwidth. So we have a main internet line that comes into our data center. And we felt, as we're forecasting, that we would be great at three gigs until next school year. In November, we realized that that was not the case, that we already had to increase our line to four gigs to meet the demand of our users, which we did. Because when we purchase equipment, we spend a lot of time forecasting and make sure we don't have to rip and replace. We want scalable equipment where we can increase our bandwidth. So we've made some projections for the next year and a half. We feel that when we open schools in August of 2017, we'll have to increase our bandwidth to five gigs, then probably in May to six, and in February to seven gigs. And the equipment that we have now, we'll be able to maintain that bandwidth. This map is called a heat map, and this shows you a school. And as you see the little green areas, this is where we have access points. And so you can see that we have a high concentration of access points where teachers are teaching. So they're having a lot of connectivity for their mobile devices. This is something that Mr. Booker touched on. In the month of January, we blocked over 433,000 attempts at malware to infect our system. So when you hear about attacks, we've got a stellar staff at Gaston County Schools that ensures that our network is safe. Other things that we do, and if you have a Gaston County Schools email, you got an email reminding you that if you don't expect to get an attachment from somebody, don't open it. And if you don't know who the person is, don't open it. We tell you, just delete it. Our internet filter filters out a lot of spam. From September 1 of this year through January, our email spam filter blocked over 3 million spam messages. That's about one-third of the messages that hit our email server. This table represents a report from a content filter on one day. This is on March 2, so it's not an average. The 26 million is the number of pages that were hit. So every time somebody went to an internet page in that day, it was over 26 million hits. 406,000 is the number of unique IP addresses that they went to, and 441,000 is a unique connection to the internet, and 99,000 different site counts. So if multiple people hit Google, it would just reflect one time. Now, you look, and it seems like we're blocking a lot of sites, but 94% of sites that are asked or requested are permitted through our filters, and just 6% are blocked. As a security measure, we have our identity management system, where all visitors check in, and it does a screening. So far this year, we've had over 228,000 scans with 33 potential matches. We talked about computing devices earlier with Mr. Hoskins. Currently, we have 24,117 Chrome devices. That does include Chrome boxes that are used in some of our classrooms and our CTE programs. One thing I do want to point out, as we're moving forward to one-to-one as the end of this school year, 1,700 of those Chromebooks will come into life. In '17, '18, 10,000 will come into life. And in '18, '19, over 8,000 come end of life. So it's not a one-and-done. It's a continual process. So you heard about all of our wonderful network security. We have six network engineers that take care of all these systems. And they are highly certified with all kinds of special credentials. They manage over 3,600 devices on our network. That includes access points, switches, servers, routers, firewalls, et cetera. So they're a busy group of people. The majority of the time, when they're doing their work, they work during the regular day, and they're spending evenings doing major fixes, repairs, migrations. Briefly, Mr. Buehler mentioned QoS. What that means is that's how we prioritize traffic on our network. So if we're testing, that takes priority over other things. So the children's testing environment is held safe for them. If someone picks up a phone, because our phones are voice-over internet protocol, you want that call to go through before somebody streams music or watches a video. So we have things prioritized. Also, something like Power School is also a priority. So we do control that traffic to make sure we get to essential things. In our system, we have over 1,600 virtual and physical networks, and we have 228 network closets in this district. We've implemented very successfully BYOD. As of the beginning of the school year, that is available to all staff and guests and multiple children. The other thing we do in the department is support devices. We have smartboards, laptops, iPads, Chromebooks, computers, voice-over IP telephones, and cell phones. So we have eight technicians that support over 46,000 devices. What I want to do now is talk about the evolution of technology and how that's changed. Many years ago, everything was teacher-centered. The teacher wrote on the chalkboard, and the students watched. Then they had their first one-to-one. Each child was given their very own chalkboard. They wrote on it with a piece of chalk and held up the answer. After we did that, then we would have dry erase boards. Then, it was a dawning of a new age. We got an overhead projector, and we all went home with vis-a-vis up and down our arm. But we were very excited, because we could keep that work. So if you taught math, you could have that same set of problems or see the children's work that they could go back to. The next great invention was called an aver key. And this little box hooked our televisions up to the old IBM computers, so you could reflect what was on that computer to your television. And finally, in 2011, again, we had the very latest technology in our smartboards. We had wonderful support from the Harper family and from our Board of Education. And every classroom in the district had one of these smartboards. This was the latest and the greatest. Now, this is what a typical classroom looks like. Currently, we have 1.4 students to every one Chromebook in our schools. So things are evolving again. So what's on the horizon and what's going to happen? Right now, we are testing a 70-inch LED display. There is a variety of ways that you can use this. This is not a touch device. But we have to look at some other types of devices, because every three years, we replace our projectors. And now, our smartboard boards are actually starting to fail, and every year and a half, we're replacing bulbs. So we don't want to just jump into something. We want a pilot. So we're doing a pilot at East Gaston, Stanley, and Pleasant Ridge. This pilot is so successful that we're expanding the pilot to include some of our pinnacle leaders. And we have some wonderful new devices. This pilot is so successful that we're expanding the pilot to include some of our pinnacle And we have some wonderful new devices. Curriculum has provided all K-4 teachers with a touch Chromebook. And if you see the one on the far left, we refer to this as a flip. So it looks like a tablet, but it also has touch capability. The other thing we're using now is Cast for Education. So instead of one student going up to the smartboard and showing their work, all students are doing their work on their device. And you can call on a student and ask them to cast or reflect their work up on the screen. So it's not just one or two children participating and working out a problem, it's the whole This is part of our pilot. If you look up on the board, she's sitting with her flip, and she's writing on the board. Here, she's using a doc camera, and she's writing on her board. So what our hope is here is that we're having a way to meet the needs of individual students. And the teacher is untethered from the front of the room. So the teacher becomes a facilitator of learning for the students, instead of delivering the content. The other exciting news that we have now, because you know when we implemented the smartboards in 2011, we also implemented computers, which are of the same age. So now, Power School is going to be able to run on a Chrome box or a Chromebook. So this is wonderful news and a less costly alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mattson. Are there any questions?
I have a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad that you gave this presentation, because I don't think people realize how much work is involved in keeping our school system running. And I did have a chalk holder when I first started teaching, that I thought was great. A ridiculous question. Every kid and every adult that gets online always sees an advertisement. Are there any school districts in the country that are putting advertisements on their network and making money off of it?
I'm not aware of them doing that. I know that there are a couple of school systems that maybe allow somebody that's selling a yearbook or something to put something on a website.
I'm just thinking, everybody in the world is used to marketing that way, and it might be something... I'm not trying to give you any extra work to do, but it might be something that we could explore at some particular time, that, you know, we could target high school kids, or maybe not necessarily all, or entry kids. But I'm saying that every device they go on, they go to, they're looking at some sort of sales pitch. I mean, there's no reason that we shouldn't as a school system. I'm not saying it's a great idea, and I'm not saying let's do it. I'm saying, I'm just curious about it.
Okay.
We might be able to use the 5.1 million to either buy land or to pay for new teachers.
Or some new Chromebooks.
But I do appreciate what you do. Thank you. Thank both of you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And what they just demonstrated is just awesome, and I appreciate what Gaston County Schools is doing to enhance technology and to allow our children to experience the new way of learning. Because truly, the teacher is the facilitator. And when that teacher can stand anywhere in the classroom, like a deck on the board, and have the children do the same, they get excited about that. So I am just very happy to know that, how it's being described, and with the technology and the advancement.
Thank you.
Ms. Cherry?
Well, I think it clearly shows that we're on the forefront, too, which is always great. And I concur with that. If we can stay ahead of the game, then that's going to benefit definitely our children, but our teachers as well. Thank you.
And I appreciate you all letting us show you the backbone, because we avoided some of these calamities that went on in the state because of people like Mr. Bueller and the time they invest and the resources it takes to do it. So some of those hops can be a little frustrating to get out there, but it does protect us as a district.
Any more questions or comments? With none, Ms. Mattson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bueller, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is school security overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Dr. Hushard with us, as well as Glenn Bratton. They have both been very involved in school security, and we're here today to talk to you about some of the training that we do with our principals and all the things that the principals have to do every day in order to remain one of the safest districts, or actually, the safest large district in the state of North Carolina. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hushard. Is he ever here to see your presentation?
Good evening, Chairman Collier, Board of Education member, Superintendent Booker. It is a pleasure to be here with you all this evening to spend a few moments and share some of the information we have on school safety and security. I do want to recognize Mr. Glenn Bratton, who is here tonight as well, and you all are aware, he is our Security Compliance Officer. He does a wonderful job in helping ensure our schools stay safe and secure, and I am grateful for him and the work that he does. I want to talk a few moments about the role of school administrator, safety officer. Being a principal today is a big job. There is a lot involved with being the leader of a school. And our administrators know that they are the lead school safety and security officer. They are in charge of that from start to finish. Our administrators clearly put safety and security first, and foremost, it's on the front burner. They also know they have to know their school, their campus, and their community better than anyone, in order to ensure that they can keep the kids and the faculty and staff safe. We do a lot of preparing. Some of that preparing is written plans and procedures. We keep an emergency notebook, provided one there for it. It's the Orange Notebook that is full of criteria, procedures, and plans that need to be not only kept, but in preparation for use, as well as evacuation routes for fire and severe weather awareness. Many of the reporting tools that administrators are required to do, we make annual assurance statements on many fronts: fire drills, internal audits, and monthly safety reports. And those are important, that our principals and the faculty and staff conduct walkthroughs and safety and security watches monthly and report back to that, and as well as create them in our school's safety plans as well. We have a school crisis management guide notebook and an incident critical command kit. And these are kept up, in the event that something major does happen, they are ready to help, to support law enforcement, as well as leaders that may need to make some decisions based on a security breach or safety breach. And the school's safety committees, that is, those are usually comprised of members from every aspect of the school, and it is a committee that is designed to help be the eyes and ears for the principal, as well as to share the wealth of keeping our schools safe and secure, as well as the knowledge. And then, to maintain and keep schools' emergency plans, they are different for every school, because every school is different, every situation that may occur. Can we plan for the millions of things that may happen? No, but school principals are held accountable for that, and we need to think through every possible scenario, as well as to plan on how to handle that with lockdowns, evacuations, panic alarms when they're set off when needed, and then our school entry system. And principals now are in the surveillance business, we're in the threat assessment business. We do sweeps, Saboms, and weapons, and other things that may be on our campus. So knowing how to proceed with those is ever-changing. We are very fortunate to have a partnership with Gaston County Police. And from my little history lesson I've done, it's been a longstanding partnership with our school resource officers in our schools. I think I was told we were actually partners with them and had school resource officers before, it was the end thing to do. So they are in every high school. They are great to work with. They help us, along with other local law enforcement agencies, to be present in our elementary and middle schools, as well as SROs. They're at athletic events, extracurricular events. They are here at meetings for us to help. So it's a longstanding, wonderful partnership, as well as all of the other local law enforcement agencies, 12 of them that actually work with us. And I am happy to say that we have... I can pick up the phone at any time, and Mr. Bratton can, or the principal can, and meet and talk with those chiefs. Our school's security audits, we conduct them every year. It is a rigorous process, one that Mr. Bratton does not take lightly, the principals do not take lightly. There are over 64 components that we check for when we do a school audit, and I am happy to say, the principals through their hard work, school safety teams through their hard work, improved this year from last year of 92% to 94%. We had three high schools that scored 97% or better, two middle schools with a 96% or better, and then 10 elementary schools with a score of 97% or higher. We even had one elementary school that scored 100%. Some of the additional trainings that we're conducting now with our school leaders, is we are planning for what we've termed right now extraordinary events. Those events that are bigger than normal, let's say a big rival game, we're asking the principals to get together and meet about the event and what may happen, and how they can work through that together. We're also conducting with Gaston County Police and the Gastonia Police Department, drug detection and awareness, so we can educate our leaders on drugs and their effects and how they may be in and around our campus. That's actually taking place at our next March Principal Administrative Meeting. And then, of course, we meet monthly with them to discuss current events and trends. Vigilance is key. We are the safest of the 10 largest districts in the state. That does not happen by accident. That takes work, hard work, diligence, and dedication. And it is taken serious here, and school administrators are responsible for that. They know that kids cannot learn unless their basic needs are met, and one of those basic needs is security. And we also know, as well as our administrators, that our best asset is our people. I want to thank you all for your continued support in keeping our schools safe, and helping us be diligent, vigilant, and supporting us along the way, as well as administrators. And I am thankful for the work the administrators do every day in all of our schools. Thank you for listening tonight, and are there any questions?
Mr. Dedman?
I don't really have a question, but I want to thank you, and I want to thank our principals. Safety is... Me being a former principal, I can only tell you that you must have a safe school, so your children can have an opportunity to learn, and our parents feel that way, too. It's hard to stop something drastic happening at schools, but we've started a great thing with having our doors locked, you know, doing all the drills. And the principals work so hard at this, and I know that they have encouraged their faculty to work hard about this. So I want to congratulate you and Glenn on a good job, and all of our principals, and all of our teachers, and our students for taking this very, very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman.
Ms. Roberts?
A couple statements and a question. Thank you for the incredible job you guys do. Thank you to our SROs who are in there. They not only keep our staff and students safe, but they form relationships with a lot of these kids. And I think we were really showing that with the loss of Officer Abernathy and his family. That really affected the kids. My question is right now, do we have any current schools that are red flag that we really need to focus on? Example, when I go to Cawston, it's so open, and it just always gets the wheels turning. So do we have any that are on track to focus on?
Open access to our schools is always a concern. You know, when they were originally built, they weren't built as prisons or to keep people out. They were actually built to invite folks in when they're 40 years old and 50 years old. And it should still be that way, but unfortunately, it's not. So yes, ma'am, we do have some concerns. We are meeting with schools on weekly basis to simply extend fence lines, so maybe we can secure the area better. Yes. I do want to comment that in all the audits that Mr. Bratton did, we did not have any schools that failed or out of D., so we were very pleased with that, their preparedness for that.
Any more questions? Mr. Ashery?
I want to ask if the fire drill and sanitation reports, are those still paper documents? Or have we streamlined that with technology?
They are paper documents, but we get them electronically submitted to us often. So we receive them both ways. We will take them in paper form or electronic form, but we do house those in facilities, and we do house them. And fire drills are required by the principal monthly. Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
I'm assuming that the cameras are adequate or over-adequate at each of our facilities.
Yes, ma'am. We always have room where we can... They are adequate. Many of our high schools, we really put the focus and concentration on high schools, hit every angle to saturate, if you will, what we record, but our camera system is adequate at this time.
Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Collier, I do want to recognize Glenn, because he supports the schools not only as the inspector, but he will identify opportunities to make it safer, not only for the children, but for the staff. And he brings an expertise, because if I'm remembering right, Glenn, weren't you one of the original SROs? So he has been at this for more than a day, and so we're very fortunate that when he chose to have a second career, he was still wanting to serve children. So we respect what he does for us.
Ms. Cherry?
And I do have to say, I see Glenn everywhere. He is out and about, and they know who he is, and they know why he's there. So that's a good visual to have.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hushard. Mr. Bratton, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a need for closed session. North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 for personnel. A motion by Mr. Ramsey, second by Mr. Dedman. Any discussion about going into executive session? With none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, we're going into open session. I mean, closed session.